We're calling your 6:43.
Recording in progress.
Start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is applied on the United States of America to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal, just as our justice is. Chip, can we confirm that that is correct?
I don't know. I don't know who that is.
Can we ask him to...
Make a mayoral request? Does it identify?
I don't think that's gonna make it. He's texting me. It's not gonna make it.
Oh, it's someone else. All right.
Submit?
Yes.
Right, so we will see if there's any public comment. You want to come up and stick your name, please?
I'm Bebe Potter. I live at 65 Main Street. Options at 65 Main Street. And once again, I just, I'm here to just... My neighborhood is so different now, and I want to thank Dominic and the city police, Marty, and anybody who was involved in all of that. I don't know what's happening, but I know that both 52 and 54 are empty and padlocked. And I know Mainland's getting gutted, so what happens from there, I don't have any say in. So, thank you all very much, and I'll help you be posted. Thank you, Bebe.
I guess I would use that time also just to mention, yeah, the fire in the neighborhood as well.
Yes.
And which was a sad occurrence, but I've heard nothing but good reports regarding Public Works, Fire Department, and Police, and how they all have been active in that discussion and helping out. So Marty and Nasa, Pottwiddos, or Chief Lamala, a lot of good compliments on how that situation was handled. So thank you all for that.
Yes, it was really good. A lot, very sad. I mean, everybody lost everyone. Friends that lived there, so it's hard.
But the, from what I've seen, the community outreach has been extensive and very appreciated by all. So it's a good side of it, if there is one.
Any other comments from the public? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, which is the budget presentation by city manager and etc. If you want to come forward.
We need to be invited this morning. I'd be happy to. Good evening.
Good morning, Sarah.
How are you guys? All right. So, good stuff. When you get to print on ledger paper, you know it's gonna be good. Hi, thank you. All right, so you have in your packets a copy of the FY '25 proposed general fund budget for the city. FY '25 runs from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025. Right around the corner. This budget is our first year of shared police services with the town, which I expect you have seen reflected in your numbers as you've perused the pages. This has allowed us to meet a number of our objectives and stay within a very low tax levy increase. So the overall proposed budget is $13.8 million with a tax levy of $5.22 million. The tax levy is a 0.6% increase from the current fiscal year, which is $30,000.
The 0.6% equals $30,000?
That's correct, yes. This would have a $7.40 change on a home assessed at $200,000, which assumes a level grand list from current year. Many of my comments follow the bullet points in the memo. I'm gonna go through them. I apologize for being repetitive, but I want to hit department by department, and we take questions along the way when we move into a discussion. When I look at a municipal budget, I like to slice it a couple of different ways. I like to see major categories of expenditures and not just department by department. So it should come as no surprise that public safety, so police, is our largest department. Public safety as a whole, police dispatch and fire is our largest segment. But within the entire budget, salaries and benefits is our largest expenditure type at 54.5% of the total budget, so $7.5 million of the entire 13.8 is for personnel costs. This is likely not a surprise, as running a municipal government is largely a service organization, and it relies on people, very good people that the city has, to make that happen. For comparative purposes, our second largest category of expenditures is our annual debt service, which clocks in at just over 10% of the total budget, $1.4 million. So there's quite a spread there between the largest category of expenditures, salaries and benefits, and the second largest category of expenditures. They get a little closer from there, with the third being professional and purchase services. So whenever we look outside to hire engineering, consulting, cleaning, audits, legal, etc., are all in this category that comes in third place at $1.1 million. And then our proposed capital spending for the year is coming in fourth place at $93,000, or 6.6% of the total budget. Speaking of capital, our proposed general fund capital purchases this year include $200,000 in the police department for vehicle replacements. This is going to replace five vehicles, a combination of new and used, and we just got the quotes from the vendor, and this will work out just fine. Our paving program is proposed at $300,000, which is a $25,000 increase over the prior year. We're replacing one of the tandem plow trucks in the Public Works Department for $270,000. And we are looking to update the parking garage system to eliminate the gates for a proposed $100,000. The parking fund also has a $30,000 reserve contribution, and the Fire Department plans to spend $10,000 on SCBA's during the year. So it's our capital plan for the year. Some of that will be funded with debt, three items in particular. So the $200,000 in police vehicles will be funded with lease purchase agreements with the vendors. The $270,000 tandem truck will be funded with debt, and that will be serviced by all three funds: General Fund, Water Fund, and Sewer Fund, as with all other Public Works equipment. And the $100,000 for the new trucking. Question on our overview before we dive in?
I thought we had a discussion that we were gonna try to drag out the police vehicles a little bit longer before we purchased those, I thought.
Tell him.
I think that was last year.
I think it was last year?
I think that was last year.
In December?
No. You're having a different conversation. I didn't think we bought them last year, because we were waiting.
Is that why it was intended?
Yeah.
And then we still have the fire truck purchase?
That's correct.
Who was still responsible for that? Half of it?
Yes, that's included.
Right.
The debt service on that.
Carrie, are we on schedule to get that?
I think we're on schedule to get that in April of '25.
At the budget, I mean, at the Finance Committee meeting, the increase was a little higher, and you renegled it to the lower level. What happened? How did you get that?
Two, two. There are 13 answers, so it can be a joint question. I'll hit you with just the largest one. So some of the things that we did, so when we presented this budget to the Finance Committee, the tax levy was a 3% proposed increase. So we've taken it from 3% to 0.6. Overall, the largest item, the largest two items relate to the economic development position, which is proposed in this budget. The first change is to start that position at the second quarter, which reduces expenditures by almost $26,000. And to use the FY '25 local option tax designated for redevelopment transfer, we pulled that back into the general fund to help seed fund the program in the first year. That was $34,000. Those are the largest two. Followed up by reducing the repair and maintenance costs in the parking garage by $15,000. If we get rid of the gates, we get rid of a large component of what we're paying to repair. We still left in that costing center enough money to cover the elevator contracts, repairs, and maintenance on the elevators, stairwells, other odds and ends in the garages. And then also, we shuffled the amount of the reappraisal. It was 50-50 FY '25 to FY '26. And after internal conversations, we thought, since they're billing us as they're performing the work, that would likely be heavier in hours in FY '26, so I took $15,000 out of that in FY '24. So we'll see how the hours actually come in. Across the two years, we'll fund 100% of that. And those are the largest, those are the largest four.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Along with that, any increase in income that you've gotten across?
I did. I actually increased our proposed interest payments on savings by $7,500, looking at where we are year-to-date and how that falls amongst the funds. That's the largest increase in the revenue projection. I also reviewed interest penalty and legal fees that come in on delinquent taxes and added $2,500 there. But generally, we focused on tucking expenditures. Expenditures are a little bit more controllable in my world than these ancillary revenue items. I get nervous about bumping those up too high and then not materializing. Other questions on the general?
Yeah, I didn't just lock on the first page.
Oh, that is, yes. I'd be happy to. Well, when you let me go first, I just jumped into my section.
Sorry.
So I might have, I should have probably started with the overall accomplishments of this budget, which are that's, in addition to the police and dispatch budgets, which have already been included, already been approved by the Joint Police Board, being included. Those increased the number of officers on the road by four, and it added two new detectives to reestablish the Drug Task Force unit. We're very pleased that we were able to do that in conjunction with rolling out the town contract. The reappraisal, as I mentioned, is funded with current and next year tax dollars as opposed to debt or any other financing method. All of the debt is reflected here, including the items that were recently approved by the council. We have added a Hardak maintenance technician to address the facilities and maintenance issues. At Hardak, this was the number-one priority of the Recreation Department this year. We've shuffled some of the hours over to the Weldon Theater, which as you probably saw is a new costing center this year, to realign some of the part-time hours into a full-time position for our person to really focus on bringing life to the Weldon and to the auditorium in City Hall. Lastly, we've added a position in parking to help double down on parking enforcement in the two garages. And I did talk about the parking system as well. All right, I think I have the sum recovered now. Would you like to go page by page?
Can I just clarify a couple things, Sarah?
I'd be happy to.
The $7.40 increase, usually we do it quarters.
Okay.
This time it's done for a year. That's $7 for the entire year, correct?
That's correct. So it's $1.85 per quarter.
For a 200, for a house assessed at $200,000?
That's correct.
Okay. And I just want to make sure everyone knows that although we collect school taxes and property taxes for the city, that the major portion of that is the school taxes, and we, that goes to school, correct?
So nothing in these, correct?
Not these.
Yeah, on your tax bill, that's correct.
When you get your tax bill, that's school and property, and your taxes for your house for the, for the city.
And a couple of years ago, the state changed the format to really break those up. So if you look at the middle of that bill, the left-hand side is meanest school, and the right-hand side is school.
Yep.
Yes, you're correct.
Are we bound by law to collect this school tax?
Yes, and to turn it over within 20 days of the due date.
So you answered the question that they cannot comply thoroughly?
Not currently, no.
They have a mechanism too.
Yeah, and in that process, we do receive a per parcel fee. So there is money that is held back for the city, and that's included in the miscellaneous revenue line item. It's about $13,000 a year. And I know that they are having their budget conversations also. And as a former school board member, welcome the public's input and questions at the meetings or via email or phone calls. All their names and numbers are on their website. I had a nice conversation with the board chair this weekend. Thank you.
So just to reinforce Chad's point and Trudy's, I think we tend to take the brunt of the complaints, because the money comes here, Nicole takes care of it. I'm sure Nicole hears about rising tax rates. I think we, as a council and a city, need to emphasize where the increases come from. I spoke to my neighbors. They're fed up with taxes, high taxes, and I had to make sure they were clear that, you know, last year we were at 2% or 3%, and school tax was at, 1% last year, school tax was at 10, 12, whatever, 14%. So we need to do a better job, I think, as a council, of just educating the public that that increase is not due to the work of the city, so.
To get involved.
Yes.
I was gonna say, I think our taxes were pretty close to 600 last year. They went up, or 6,000, sorry. They went up about 600, and I think it was about 1,700 of it was for the city. So that's the, you know, that's for fire, police, get the roads plowed, sidewalks taken care of. So, all right, thank you.
Sarah, feel free to move on, or down, or move it down.
Go away, Sarah.
I will. So this is my first budget for the city. In other places I work, we've moved on to department by department. I'm happy to do that. My comments are gonna follow my bullet points. Or if your council would like to direct a different approach, I'd be happy to hear it. All right, I got a couple thumbs up at that, so let's roll. So on to the big sheets of paper. Starting on, and a lot of this is going to look very similar to formats you've used in prior years. I've made a couple of tweaks. We'll know along the way, but much of it will be very familiar. So your very first sheet, number one, is a summary of all of our revenue and all of our proposed expenditures. These are by department, and in the expenditure segment, I've broken out capital and debt. So you can see those separate from operating expenses. On page two, we have a summary of general revenues other than property taxes. So these are items like interest and penalty on delinquent taxes, contributions from the water and sewer fund. You'll notice that the affiliation fee is no longer, as that goes away with the first year of the Joint Police Contract. For FY '25, I'm anticipating a total of $700,000 in local option tax revenue. $20,000 of this is taken right off the top and put into the clerk's department revenue to replace the former liquor tax. And the other $680,000 is divided up per council policy, with 5% going to a general stabilization fund, 5% redevelopment transfer. Though recall, I just noted that I've pulled that actual transfer this year to help seed fund the economic development position. We have 7.5% for reparation. We have a few items of debt that are specifically funded with the local option tax. We'll talk about more when we get to the debt section. And then everything else of that $680,000 is booked as general fund revenue. With interest on our savings, receivables, our payments in lieu of taxes from the state of Vermont, the rental of the gym, or the auditorium, just being this evening, and some other miscellaneous items. No major changes here other than the elimination of the affiliation fee in FY '24. Onto page three. We have county and regional functions. And so this is where we account for our Franklin County tax, our contract with Amcare Northwest Regional Planning, and other nonprofit appropriations as they come in. This year, I have funded all of the appropriation requests at their requested amount if they were funded in the prior year. So that's what you see reflected here. The only big change in this costing center is that the $15,000 contribution to the Restorative Justice Center has been relocated to the police department, and now will be jointly funded by the city and the town. Questions about county and regional functions? So the town also contributes $15,000 to that? It will be $15,000 to Cogol, is what's in the police department budget for '25. And that's just from the St. Albans communities, or other communities benefited from that? The $15,000. Just the program in general? Yeah, the program serves Franklin and Grand Ahel Counties. All of the communities within the two counties.
But we do not collect, that money's funded through the state, right? We do not collect money from the towns specifically for that?
With the exception of some very specific and small panel fees or programming fees that run through their costing center, which is our very last one, that is fully funded with grants, which are gonna come in at over $1 million this year. Page four. Page four is the Finance and Administration Costing Center. And this is where the proposed Director of Economic Vitality is housed. You'll notice that overall, this is a decrease, and this is because of the Joint Police Contract. So in the Joint Police Contract, we've, we are, the police contract includes all costs associated with the police department, including property casualty insurance, workers' comp insurance, legal fees. And so all of those were previously expensed in this costing center. So you'll note as you review these numbers that there are decreases in our insurance lines, in our legal lines, and in the HRA and leave buyback as costs have been moved there, over to the police department for full costing. Once we started moving costs around, it didn't make sense to continue to account for the leave buyback and the HRA costs here and not in the individual departments. If we've done that, we have two methods for accounting for the same thing. So I redistributed those amongst their respective departments as well. Other than the economic development position and the moving out of some police-related items, there are no other major changes to this costing center. Questions? On to page five, which is the City Clerk's Department. The big thing coming up in the Clerk's Department FY '25 is that we'll have a national presidential election, and our election expenses reflect that, and our current plan is not to mail ballots. So we have not included any additional costs for printing and postage. If we did intend to mail ballots, that would need to be added. Questions? All right. Page six is planning and development. So planning and development, the big change this year is that the first year of two years of the reappraisal is included here. That's included in line 20, the one with the very big percentage and dollar change. We have made a few tweaks to revenue items and event expenditures to better reflect the division of costs between the city and St. Albans for the future. And other than that, there are no major changes to this department. Questions here? All right then. Let me know if you'd like me to slow down a bit more detail. I'm happy to pivot as the council looks up. Onto page seven is the debt service costing center. You'll notice in rows 16 through 25, all of the police and dispatch-related debt had been moved out, and those have been moved into the police costing center for the same reason as the insurance and HRA removed out. So this is a full costing of those functions as part of the shared services contract with the town. The very, very top row, which does not have a number, but it's called Local Option Tax Offset, is in here as a calculation. I want to reassure you that I have checked this now eight times. It is not double counted in the question. This reflects the fact that our latest sidewalk bond, which is on row 49, and the pool bond, which is in row 36, and components of row 13's capital restructuring note that we just issued are all funded with dedicated local option tax revenues. From a formatting perspective, you'll see that I have italicized row in each department called Sum of Retired Debt, where it just collapsed everything that's been retired for historical accuracy, but also set it to see it more on one page. Questions about our debt costing center? Okay. On page eight, you will see a summary of the police department and the dispatch department budgets. These summaries have been approved by the Joint Police Board at the beginning of December. This is a slightly different format than the rest of the budget. This is summarized by major expenditure category, so we get an out-of-glance overview of what's happening in these departments without getting lost in all the line item detail. I do have all the line item detail, and I'm happy to share it if you'd like to see it. But I thought, since it's already approved, that this would be a nice way to see what the JPB had approved to be included into the packet. I do want to point out here that part of the contract with the town has the city and the town splitting the cost of police dispatching services. And so we calculated that by taking the entire cost of dispatching less all of our existing contracts for services, and the remainder is what is needed to cover the city and the town police services. And that was split between the two entities. The mechanism to do that is reflected in rows 10 and 36 on the summary page. I want to reassure you again, this is not double counted. This is a, the net operations from dispatch on row 36 is placed up into row 10 to get a split between the city and the town in rows 19 and 20. And then it's removed again on the summary sheet for costing out the police department and calculating the city's tax rate. So if you are recalculating by numbers, that would be one piece that needs, that would need to change. Want to, yes, Bob?
The town has exactly the same sheet.
They do, yes.
One of those joint police board meetings, you were, there was some suggestion you might go down to talk to the select board. Have they asked you to do that as of yet, or?
Well, they had asked the police chief to go down and talk to the select board, and I think that he has.
Okay.
Yes, yes. I have not been in.
Okay.
So Sarah, is there any costs associated, one-time costs associated with making this change? So for example, maybe there's a hiring bonus. So because you're getting six new officers, it's just gonna be a big call for hiring. Is there, is there one-time fees in here for that change?
Other than initial, like, fit-up expenditures, equipment, the initial equipment fit-up, and? Computers. Thank you. That's exactly the word I was looking for. I don't see, there are some, there are some, like, one-time items in the contract that are personnel-related, but I don't, I have, in lieu of vacancy scenes, I don't have those called out. And so I have this as smooth as possible into the first. Great question. We're always looking for those in anticipation of future budgets.
Do you have expansion costs, though, in order by the town, is that what you're? Yeah, that's what I was wondering, yeah. Like, okay, we got a bunch of new officers, now we need a bunch of new cars.
All that's billed.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Other questions about these? Other questions about these summaries? Moving on to page nine, which is Animal Control, and there are major changes here. And we'll jump right over into page 10 and 11, which is the Fire. There are no major changes to the program as a whole. The revenue figures reflect the quadrant that will be going into in FY25 for the rental inspection program, and the capital component here is that we're proposing $10,000 to spend on SEVAs. The FY24 budget houses the Trump, I pulled that in, it was called out as a separate article in the morning, I reflected it here, so I can keep track of it, and that is shown in the FY24 column.
Any questions?
Yeah, good.
When I look at the PHSO violations, when I look at the revenues from, like, 2019, '20, and even '22, they're considerably more, almost double what they were in '21 and '23, and even what you're proposing now, is there a reason for that?
It all depends on who's out there violating ordinance.
So less people are violating their ordinance?
Well, I would say it's, it's more volatile than that.
Two more, well, it was a brand-new program back then, so there was a lot of pent-up demand, right, so we're getting the handle on more, so it tends to, I mean, it tends, I'm not, I'm not sending a lot of violations out there, right?
So when there's violation, then there's a fine for those violations?
Yeah.
Or they have so much time to, to make it right?
No, I mean, there's a, there's a per-day fine, right, but as you begin to clean up the city, there's less of that available.
This is one of those that may be low, but my preference is to leave it there and be pleasantly surprised, as opposed to the other way around, I think, there, okay. Other questions on the Fire Department? On to page 11. Page 11 is a summary sheet for the various Recreation Costing Centers. So what I've done to make things a little bit more understandable for me and for tracking purposes is I've broken Recreation up into its five different components, which in my mind are General Recreation, Administration and Programming, the, our Hardak Costing Center, our Barlow Street School Costing Center, the Pool, and now our building next door, which includes the Weldon Theater and the residential apartments above. I wanted to break this down, summarize it here, so you can see overall what's happening in the Recreation Department with a very stable net operations number, which is the net amount that this department as a whole is relying on the tax dollar. So even with the addition of a new program here, we're still staying in what we've seen historically as the amount of tax dollars that's going to fund Recreation. So that's the summary, and then all of the detail follows, starting on pages 13 and 14, with General Recreation, Administration and Programming. We are, the Recreation Department has transitioned a part-time position into a full-time position to help with programming, and that's been reflected in this budget. The Recreation Department is working on expanding programming for seniors in the coming year and expanding summer camp offering for middle school and early teenagers, including a new counselor and training program. Kelly and I did some work together to consolidate some odds and ends accounts and increase the accuracy with which items are split between Recreation and Pool, so we can really get a sense of full costing on the individual segments of this department. Otherwise, no major changes in General Recreation here.
Do any other towns buy into the Pool to get better rates from the residents besides the Town?
I think there are a couple others, I think Georgia does, and I, that's the only one I know for sure, but I do believe maybe some other of the surrounding communities do.
I think it was discussed with Fairfield before everyone happened to hear that.
Okay.
Fairfield was in and we're out. It's not something that did any of it.
The next costing center on page 15 is Hardak, and so the full-time maintenance employee is on row 11, and this was the top priority for the Recreation Department in this budget. This is going to deal with the year-round maintenance requirements up there and take some of the pressure back off of Public Works, who has been, the Public Works Department has been filling that gap since we moved up there without anyone to backfill their own work, so this will relieve some of that pressure and mean our goal, the hard act.
So it's maintenance, mowing, trail care, that kind of stuff?
We'll likely still need Public Works help to mow, so we have two people full-time in the summer, just mowing all day, every day, 30 acres up there, but it is, you know, parking lots, trail maintenance, shoveling around the dome, helping with mechanical issues at the Pool or at the Lodge, doing other maintenance that comes up. Marty, I'm sure you have a whole laundry list of, of things that you might be offloading to this person, but general maintenance, year-round.
Will that person do the pool maintenance, I mean, pool?
Chemicals.
Chemicals and?
The current pool staff does the chemicals.
I was just making sure we're clear that it's not just maintenance on a building, it's, it's maintenance on 100 and whatever acres of stuff.
And would it include, like, the disco and the hiking trails?
Absolutely.
The biking trails and working with all this hill, like, group to make sure?
It's mostly, mostly fields and trails. Brandon Billings out there in pretty good shape.
It's having somebody there all the time to respond to all that stuff, as opposed to our guys on a job going down the way to do stuff, but we've been up there, all, all working on changing over the electrical, putting in conduit, putting up lanes, and this individual is just going to be able to respond to all the maintenance stuff that's going to be going on up there day-to-day basis.
And if, if there's, if there's a day where they're all caught up, then they would come and help your guys, the rest of the crew, or?
I don't see that happening.
No, no.
We would absolutely find something else.
Yeah.
If we're still pulling PWD to help them, they're going to be busy for a while.
It's a long grass.
One question, Sarah. On the Hardak expenses, we reflect the afterglow, but we don't show, I don't think we do, any income from that, which I think historically we have received.
So if you, so that is all being managed in Recreation Programming and Events, and so on row 20, on page 13, there is a revenue line item where you can see that coming. So this is one of the, as part of dividing up the big Recreation segment into individual departments, we make some accounts.
Oh, Oscar Bow on 19.
Yep.
What, why do you want to keep them open the same?
They are, so the, there's, as you can see in the 25 proposed column, there's no expenditures for afterglow in the Hardak. Expenditures there have been moved up to Programming and Community Events, so general programming in, in the Recreation, Administration programs. Excellent question, appreciate the continuity. Check, other questions on Hardak? We're to flip to page 16. The City owns, still owns the Barlow Street School. This costing center reflects the cost of owning that building and the rental income per the active rental agreement. There are no major changes here. I do, I did include expenditures for utilities, as is required by the lease, so that would be the change in the expenditure segment, but as you can see, the lease revenues cover them.
Is that whole building used by Head Start?
Yes.
I haven't been up there since the afterglow. Moving on to the Pool, Pool is on pages 17 and 18. The Pool is proposed as a rate-even budget, give or take, with about $5,000 surplus for FY25, all of those according to plan. FY23 was our first pool fiscal year, and so our FY25 estimates are updated to reflect actuals on utilities and on chemicals. Chemicals is an increase, as we talked about earlier in the spring when we did water and shore budgets. Chlorine, which we use a lot at the Pool, is up about 140%. Any questions on the Pool?
So this may be more forgotten, the Town's contributing $20,000 to the Pool to be considered residents?
This is, actually, the 20,000 is more than that.
Go ahead.
The $20,000 is an estimate, so the, if you're a Town resident, you go to the Pool, you pay the residential rate, and on a quarterly basis, the City bills the Town the actual difference between folks who actually use the Pool, the Town, folks who actually use it, and what they would have paid, and then the Town pays that. So this is not a flat contracted amount, it's an estimate.
So the onus is on the Town resident to go and get?
No, so when you show, if you, you're not, you're obviously a council, so you're obviously not a Town resident, but if a Town resident showed up at the Pool, they would be, they ask, which town do you live in? The Town of St. Albans, they're charged the residential rate, and on a quarterly basis, on the back end, so between Finance and Recreation, we send the Town of St. Albans an invoice with all of that detail, and they pay exactly what's owed, the difference between the residents.
That's better than, they used to make the people go and get the money.
So this, this $20,000 is not like a flat contract amount, it's just an estimate. The FY23, the Town started doing that in April, and so we were looking at, we got $7,000 in 2023, where may we go in 2025? So that's, that's, that's your question.
And so it is, and agreement in place, right?
Yes.
So.
The $20,000 is off.
It's all agreements.
That's correct, yeah, they picked that back up in, up April of 2023.
Is that how Swin team is run to, like, resident and non-resident? Is that something?
So.
Because I know there's a lot of kids that do Swin team.
For six or seven years now, everything in RAC has been, they pay the same, we set the fees, and we send the Town a bill for the difference. A year ago, when the Pool was done, they said they want that to be in place for everything except for the daily gig at the Pool, and it was carved out for the Pool, and that was a real problem, you could imagine, in operation and in finances for the front desk staff and everything. So last spring, they said, we want to go back to where it was, where everything in RAC is at par, and you send us a quarterly bill for the difference, and you guys set the rates.
His Swin team run through RAC like?
Yeah.
Okay.
Swin team's part of it.
Okay.
It's the part of the possible math. I know, go ahead. I'm sure it's into the RAC.
The Town is getting a good deal.
The Town's getting a good deal.
If they had passed their vote, and we both split the cost on it, they would be paying substantially more to cover the cost of the debt service on the Pool.
But they'd also be, they would have been part of it.
They would have been part of it, yes.
I mean, the mercy of the world is that the Town got their cable, too.
Exactly. I would encourage we look at the rates and increase those.
We retain control of the rates.
What's that?
We retain control of the rates.
The Town may allow.
There's only so much elastic that they are, correct?
And we're breaking even.
Breaking even. We have the first regional public safety department, Police Department.
That one's part of the deal.
Let's get that set up first before we look through the left.
Hi Sarah, I said I'd be there. You knew it was coming, I could tell. Next page. On to page 19, this is a new costing center for the building next door, 104 and 106 North Main, this houses the Weldon Theater and the residential rentals on the second and third floor. On your worksheet here, we have the FY23 actuals and the FY24 actuals as of mid-December. This represents about 11 months of us operating that, so if you look at that being here, 11 months of us operating the theater, so if you look at those two columns together and get basically what our first year, how we did in our first year in our infancy, what we've proposed in 2025 is to bring in the residential rental income and the expenditures related to the residential apartments to help balance out this costing center. The building really needs to be taken as a whole to be feasible, and so we've done that here in FY25. This is also where we have split off some of the part-time hours and made a full-time manager position in the costing center, that's reflected here as well. Are there any questions about?
The full-time manager is after the entire building, or is that just for?
Oh, that's just for the theater.
Just for the theater.
And the touring.
Right.
Okay, oh, okay.
So ultimately, Kelly's relieved of those duties.
Yes.
Although it remains part of the RAC department, but just like Isaac manages the Pool, we really want somebody to manage the Entertainment Division.
Kelly don't work down here on weekends.
That's all to help us, we relieve a lot of load.
The Entertainment Division.
Does he milk dads in the concession stand?
Okay, noted.
There may be some in the cellar.
I didn't know there was a cellar around here. Okay, didn't know.
I'm sure there's something in the cellar.
All right, that covered my comments on this, and that concludes our tour of Recreation. On pages 20 and 21, we've moved on to the Public Works Department. There are multiple segments in Public Works, as there were previously in RAC, have not made any moves to split these out, so we have, to Marty, Rob and myself, done some tweaking of accounts to make it flow a little bit better. So we have Public Works Administration, Highway and Parks here, along with our Capital Segment down on page 21. There are no major changes to operations here, we, other than we have the $300,000, there are no major changes to operations, the changes in this budget are in the Capital Segment, which is on page 21, starting in row 92, where we've increased our paving program from $275,000 to $300,000, and we propose replacing one of the tandem plow trucks for $270,000 using dentures. I'd be happy to answer, I'd be happy to punt any questions about this to Marty. If there are any.
Marty, for sidewalk piling, do you use those, do we use the old gray articulated vehicles still, or do we have the newer red and gray ones?
We have one MB left, we have a trackless still, and we have two of the vent trucks. The vent trucks have a newer, one's the gray, we put mower decks on those in the summertime, we can sweep, we usually sweep the parts up with leaves with those in the fall, and we use them at Hardak on the hill because they can handle the work.
I was gonna say, the other ones seem like they were just very purpose-built for?
Yeah, they were single, single-use. The trackless and the MB are good if you get a lot of heavy snow.
Yeah.
But they, the MBs, we've got two MBs, one is operational, one is the parts. We just gave a bunch of parts to Fairfax because they inherited a MB and they needed some, so we gave them a bunch of parts off our open. Any replacement we would do in the future would be either another trackless or another one of these vent trucks.
How much are one of those vent trucks?
Um.
Roughly?
50 grand probably.
So a lot cheaper.
The trackless is like 200 grand.
Yeah, a lot cheaper.
Plus, it's a lot more versatile. You can use it in the summer, you can use it in the fall, it's got a snowball attachment, it's got a sweeper, it's got mowing decks, it's got a plow blade.
That's all in the 50 grand?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Other questions on Public Works? Moving on to page 22, which is the Parking Program. Two, two major items here, the addition of a parking enforcement position is included in this costing center, and the addition of replacing the capital item and the offsetting debt to replace the gated systems at the two garages with a system that does not require gates. We are proposing to increase the rates by 5% to help offset these costs, but this costing center also relies on the tax rate. Questions about parking? And then our very last page in the budget, page 23, is a summary of the Franklin Grand Isle Restorative Justice Center. As I mentioned, the Restorative Justice Center is looking at $1.1 million in grant funding in FY25, and I've broken this down for you in quite broad summary categories of personnel and program expenditures here, since this department is fully funded on their grant recognition, which is currently increasing. And that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to feel. I'd be happy to field any questions.
Our expectation is, uh, Restored Justice will be, remain in that building, but it'll be.
Or not necessarily, but nine rated for it. Definitely can move it because of these costs.
Where, where are they?
Couple of them down, uh, in the old, um, office, the, um, council.
And do we have, we have revenue from rent there?
No, no, we have expenditure for rent and their program expenditures. So they pay rent.
We don't own the building and they're charging rent out of the grants. But where do we go? That's for that day.
That's a good idea.
I'm not gonna speak now. I'm worried about this.
Anyone have any questions for Sarah or Donald? I would just like to say thank you to Trudy Bobb and Tim Pockets for their work on this. I, I do know, I don't know if Tim's pushed it, but he, this isn't my suggestion, Sarah, but he'd like to get to a zero percent. Just for as much of parents' sake and show the effort, but.
Yeah, we talked about that, we started at three, we're now to zero point six without getting too crazy on those revenue projections, which is really scary.
Thanks for sharpening your, your little.
Yeah, no, I think in, in this day and age of inflation, that what it is and everything the city has going on, I think, uh, the committee did a great job in conjunction with Sarah and Donald, so thanks for your efforts. I would find it hard to believe that, uh, this will be met with any skepticism. Optimistic.
I also think Sarah presents very clearly, explicitly, the financial documents are very easy to understand. For you, for somebody like myself, we have attuned to that.
Thank you very much. That's very much.
Actually, Bob, did you remind me of one thing, Sarah?
Oh, it's.
Can we get a list of, um?
Was it formatted?
No, I like to format everything. A list of the bonds that we had outstanding?
Yeah.
Deadlines, uh, due, due dates or expiration and what those, what those are like.
Yes.
And the only other thing I would, I mean, we only review these every three or four months, really, honestly. But the other thing that would be awesome in there is, I, I didn't see it in there, but maybe it is, but how much do we have in each account? So how much do we have in the water, water, um, you know, rainy day funds? How much do we have in wastewater? How much do we have in law? How much do we have in NARA, et cetera, et cetera? Seeing those are a couple of months would be nice.
I'd be happy to update those balances for you.
Thank you. I know we just got.
Many of them are.
I know we just got them recently, so.
Spent down.
Yeah. That is helpful as well when you make decisions.
Any other questions? Sarah, thank you very much for your time and effort. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Next on the agenda, Chip, you're up. Oh, well, I'm gonna be lost without Chad. Is there any public comment on the, uh? On the budget? Anyone on Zoom? Evie, any comments? Any comments on the budget? No.
You're good now.
Thank you, Chad.
So, um, process-wise, we need to, uh, sign the warning typically the last week of January. Chip wins our, I don't know if you noticed that for.
We were gonna do it on January twenty-ninth, which means we'll need to notice it this Friday.
So. That's the last Monday in January. Does the council wish, under the last bullet, wish to direct us in any manner regarding the budget? Or should we bring this forward in the morning on the twenty-ninth? Or do you want to meet again and discuss it before this Monday?
Do you want a motion?
Motion to agree.
Okay, I motion. I motion that we put the budget that was presented, um, for a warning on January twenty-ninth.
How's that good?
Is that good?
It's great.
So we have a motion to the second. Any questions or comments?
I just wanna say thank you. Appreciate it, especially after last year's dramatic budget increase for the school. I appreciate this.
Very pleased that we're able to accomplish.
Not coming from here.
No.
We've done our part.
Okay, all those in favor of Chad's motions, aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Are you set with that, Don?
Yep, thank you.
Soon as Sarah vacations, Chip.
There's still time to change your mind.
Can you?
Can I get a please here?
Yeah.
Well, Chip, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
You have a number of items?
Yes.
Under you. So we'll turn it over, table's yours and, uh, the floor is yours.
The first thing is something the planning commission's been working on for a couple of months. Has a lot to do with the fact that we had a couple of hiccups with, uh, some enforcement of some parking cases in zoning recently because just of the way things were worded in our zoning, if you read them literally, definitions that might be left out or definitions that don't exist in the zoning that would help us out. Also, there were a couple, there are various different ways in which performance bonds or performance guarantees or financial guarantees were required in the zoning, even for very small projects and, and not, not limited to public improvements, but also being required for private improvements. And it had diverged pretty widely from the enabling statute, the state laws that govern our zoning that mention performance bonds. So this was a good chance to, um, add some clarification to help us with enforcement, um, but also deal with these performance bond issues. And we'll say that a lot of zoning enforcement and, and also a lot of the conversation about new development does have to do with parking and where it should be. So this is, uh, this needs to be some pretty beneficial changes if they do pass. Your packet includes the markup, but it starts with this memo, which goes through amendment by amendment, what the, the summary of what's being proposed. So I'm, I'm just gonna stick with the memo to start. Amendment one adds some useful definitions to our listed defined, our listed defined terms in the zoning. We actually don't have a definition of parking in the zoning right now. We don't have a definition of the word trailer, which actually became an issue. Or travel trailer, which is already mentioned in the zoning and that comes up later with these changes. Or storage. So combination of just going to the good old dictionary, but also looking at other local regulations and where it might show up in state statute, we have added definitions for those terms in the zoning. So it clearly says that when, when, when our zoning rules talk about parking, this is what, this is what we mean. This is what parking is. In the second amendment, there's a section four oh six point two called travel trailers. And there's this rule in there that I think was probably, you know, it's probably been in there for a couple of decades. And I think it has a lot to do with the fact, people who own travel trailers, they might have family or friends who visit once a year or so, and they, they hang out in the trailer while they're there instead of in the house or instead of in a tent in the backyard. So we have a rule in our zoning that allows, if you own a travel trailer, you're allowed to park it in your side setback next to your neighbor and you're allowed to have someone stay in there for two weeks out of the year. But it can't be hooked up to, um, can't be hooked up to utilities. There's also a weird provision at the beginning of this section, which says, which goes straight into things that are not travel trailers. It talks about motorhomes and camper vans and says that they can only be parked on sales lots in the city, which has not been the case. People who own motorhomes, camper vans, anything that's self-propelled, self-propelled campers, they've been parking them in their driveways wherever they can legally go for a long time. So one of the things we've proposed with the second amendment is we eliminate that section about sales lots. Just keep following the rules about vehicles. Wherever a vehicle can park, you can park your motorhome. And on the section about travel trailers in the side setback, we've kept that in. We've added in some clarifications about, um, making sure the trailer is well-maintained, especially if you're parking it right next to your neighbor. We've added in that you have to maintain the outer appearance of this. You can't just put something next to your neighbor and then have it start falling apart on the outside. Has to be maintained as highway legal, otherwise it's not a travel trailer, it's not highway legal, that sort of thing. So that's the second amendment.
So Chip, can I just ask a couple of questions on this?
Yes.
So if you're, so what we're saying is you can't have your travel trailer hooked up to an extension cord going from your house.
Like water and sewer.
It's just water and sewer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause I was thinking the same thing.
Utilities, I'm thinking electricity, I'm like, I'd much rather have that than someone generator going for.
And we're not going after electricity. Utilities generally means water, sewer, something that would turn it into a dwelling unit.
Okay.
Fully equipped dwelling unit.
Have you specified?
Cause when you said utilities, I thought, oh, we're on our boat in to charge the battery.
Uh, we can change that to water and sewer services, water and sewer utilities for the second meeting if you'd like.
Okay, so.
That makes sense.
Water and sewer. Cool, good idea. You wanted to municipal?
Yeah.
Well, I just want, I thought Chad brought up a good point, too. If someone chooses not to run an extension cord in the house, are we gonna rule out the generators?
That's, that would fall under noise protection, so just be irritating to hear that.
That's where we start getting into, there are other rules that we can use too.
Okay. And, and a travel trailer that's in someone's driveway?
It can be there.
Can be there, whatever.
Yep, as long as it's where a vehicle can be. Right, which is why we specifically added trailers to parking. So that now when we talk about parking in the zoning, we mean cars, trailers, anything that you would think of parking.
Can they be parked on the city streets?
That would be a separate ordinance, not zoning. But I mean, that is something we can look into in the other, in the municipal ordinances. Right now.
If it's a spot, it's a spot, right?
Right. Right. I'd have to look into that, but I think that.
Registered street where we.
Highway legal, yeah.
Not green.
And. And linger, yeah, right. And it move, and it gets moved when it's supposed to move for the, for the parking van.
My concern with big vehicles like that being parked on the street, and I'm jumping ahead to my, like, council report is if the green bus, what we're talking about, the van, when it's parked in certain places, it obstructs the view of people trying to drive around it and see how to pull safely onto Commerce Street.
Yeah.
That's my concern. It's not, I mean, it's not nice to look at, but whatever. It's, it makes it hard for people to navigate around it and it's been brought up by several high constituents.
When large trailers, buses are parked on the side of the street, it is where our on-street parking looks like it might be getting a little too out of, getting a little too far out there. Almost tragedy of the commons, right? So, I mean, I think if the council wants staff to look at, if there's a better way to deal with that kind of vehicle or what's, what's the intent of the on-street parking in the first place, that might be something we can look at.
I think it's more when it's parked in front of the library diagonally, when people are trying to get off of that, the one-way street and out and around to turn right up.
So maybe a more, just, just a local solution for that one spot might also be a solution too. We've done that.
We've all over the place, ten of those spots that it parks in. I think our parking enforcement officers are gonna be able to deal with this. I don't need a new regulatory scheme, I think it's large enough.
I'm just concerned about people who are trying to safely turn from one street to next.
Yeah, right.
Really.
That vehicle has a permit to park in a dedicated slot. Solid, do they?
You can't go around designate every single spot a compact car parking only.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I would be hesitant to do anything about it just because there's so many driveways in the city you can't get a big camper to do. And if someone's visiting, that's where they park on the street. So, I mean, there's a couple down, but, cause there's a ton of people running on the ends of the driveway. So instead of trying to go in the driveway, they just park on the street. It's usually a night or two.
Okay, yeah.
It's not.
Right, so maybe, or maybe an amendment isn't the right, that more enforcement.
Can you just give one clarification, Chip? So you said, uh, previously, uh, trailer could park in the setback off the driveway, that way it's.
Yeah, it's had, it's had a special status for a while now.
Does that go away?
No, no, we're just adding language to clarify the intention.
And that includes boats?
No, no, it includes, um.
Boats aren't caught in the net, true.
The boats are not caught in the net. Boats, um, you can park boats in your backyard, but not in the side setback. But travel trailers have been given this special.
Trudy's kids have known to sleep in the boats.
Because they can't find a house.
Trudy, if it's, if it's a houseboat, then yes.
It's just no water and sewer.
This is, this is one of those rules that exists for us to use when a situation has gotten to the point that someone's, that we need to step in. Right.
On off the rails a little bit.
We have begun, we're not really the travel trailer police out there looking for it, right? It's like, we wanna be able to use it when, when a situation is getting out of hand.
Okay, continue on, Chip, please.
Some improved text based on past challenges with administering the parking rules. So one of the, one of those powerful tools the city has for creating that sense of place in our neighborhood is, um, there's this longstanding rule that you cannot park in the front setback and you can't park between a principal building and the street. Now, in our neighborhoods, in, in our county, people own a lot of cars. And you'll see cars throughout our neighborhoods, but they're typically on the driveway. And to that extent, we actually limit the amount to which you create new parking areas in front of buildings for parking. And you try to drive that toward the sides of the buildings or even to the behind buildings, especially when a new project, when a new house is, um, proposed from the get-go, we say, okay, the house can go here, we need the parking to be on the side. Since you're starting from a clean slate, you're able to make it work. But we've had some cases where the fact that we didn't have a definition of parking made it hard to, um, when someone was parking their trailer in their, right in their front setback, right in their lawn. So that's one of the reasons why we've brought this forward so that we can more easily enforce these rules without being challenged on these nitpicky details. So the amendments, the third amendment is really about just clarifying that you're not supposed to have any new parking in the front setback. You can have a driveway, but that portion of the driveway that is in the front should be focused on providing access to a garage or to the side of the house. And you can park on that driveway. Anywhere there's a driveway, you can park on it. But you're not allowed to start just creeping that driveway over and just start adding cars in front of houses. If you're gonna add parking, you're supposed to try and find other solutions, go up the side or something like that. So that's the third amendment. And if you, if, if you're worried about some of our existing lots that are challenged, there are some safety valves in zoning for lots where parking in the, parking in the side setback, actually, um, parking in the front, if they're your only option to have what we would consider to be enough parking spaces for a single-family home, for instance, you can do that. But for most other properties where there's another solution, that's where we want folks to go. Um, the fourth amendment, striking the balance between allowing driveways and enforcing parking, that actually gets at what I just said, that idea of that, um, you're, everyone's allowed to have a driveway in front of their house and you're allowed to park on it. So it, it actually makes sure that we, we can live in a world. So, it, it actually makes sure that we, we can live in a world where we're both trying to discourage more parking in front, but also letting people have driveways in front of their houses that gets up to the house. Now, Amendments five through nine all are about this performance bond issue that I talked about before. Right now, we have a rule where if you come in, um, and you're building, um, a year before the DRB for some reason, and you might be a single-family home in a designed new district, and for some reason you're proposing landscaping, right now our zoning says all landscaping requires a performance bond. I don't, and I don't know why. That was a rule that was put in before I was here, and what I have, I have a feeling that it was a case where it was turned from landscaping in the city right away to benefit a large project that should have a performance bond, and at some point, that public aspect was lost as rules got rewritten. The state statute says a DRB can require that we don't issue a permit unless any public improvements associated with that project are finished first. Or you can require that a performance bond be put in place for those public improvements, and then you get your permit before you build the improvements. And the state statute also doesn't require a DRB to require these performance bonds. But our rules have gotten a little out of hand. So, these amendments, at the end of the package, propose that we create a section 525 that just deals with public improvements and performance bonds, and it takes the language out of state statute, and it basically puts it right into our zoning. It enables it for the DRB, it doesn't require that the DRB do it every time, and it adjusts things for city context. And it basically limits performance bonds only to public improvements. Like, if you have a large subdivision and you need to build a sewer main as part of it, or a street that the city's likely going to take over when all is said and done, the DRB can require a performance bond for that, to make sure it gets done and gets done right. But we're not going to, we can't be requiring performance bonds for private improvements on private land that's only going to be enjoyed by that private landowner. That's not right.
Have we been requiring these performance bonds all along?
Well, yeah, because, because the language is there, the DRB has looked at it and said, well, we have to do this.
And do these have a dollar amount on them, five, $10,000, or what?
Yeah, sometimes they're really low, and it's, it's sort of like not worth the paperwork. And basically, it's set up that the ZA and the applicant come to an agreement, and the sometimes we've taken a blank check because it's some small private landowner that doesn't know how to go to a bonding company, right?
These are non-charity bonds, in other words, you just have them sign the bond but not get backing for them?
Um, it's, it's been any which way that they can be. The more sophisticated folks have done something like that.
Lot of credit from the mayor.
So, the, the suggestion is to create this section that's just about performance bonds, that goes back to the source of state statute, and basically doesn't venture out from that. And then all the other sections of our regs that have mentioned performance guarantees or performance bonds or financial guarantees, it basically just simplifies those, and they point to this new section. And then it's all much clearer with this amendment. And that's the proposal.
So, please, Chip, it brings us back to that age-old question. We park on a driveway and drive on a parkway, right? Do you have an answer for that? So, you, uh, this is just a first reading?
Yes.
So, you don't need anything official from us?
I did get that one added to the travel.
Yeah, that.
Yeah.
And at our February meeting, you'll be back for a second reading.
Mm-hmm.
So, anyone have any questions or comments or change, uh, changes, but suggestions? Anyone good? Thank you, Chip. Moving on to...
Uh, the next up, we have one of those loan documents where you have to sign it in multiple places. This is for state revolving funds, for planning funds, $48,000, for the Seven Street C S O project that we really need to do this year. We have actually, we have other money that we can use, ARCA funds from the state, to construct the project, where we're going to take advantage of this loan for the planning activities that are underway right now. So, on this handout, if you so approve this loan document, it is marked where we need city council signatures, and then one extra place for the mayor's signature.
I move we approve the loan application for Seven Street C S O project.
Chip, a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Marie. Uh, any comments or questions? Chip, do you have a rough estimate of what our separation is between stormwater and sewer? Of the whole system? Are we 70/30, or are we just ballpark?
I'd say no more than a third of the city by square footage is in a combined area, but a lot of our more impervious areas are combined, like the downtown. At least half of the core of the city is combined. And that's one of the areas where we were looking, we might be able to do more separation of the core, but we're looking more at doing storage instead, um, rather than these complicated retrofit separation projects. Either way, we just got to keep, we just got to keep it from overflowing during a big rain. That's what we got to do.
Thank you. Um, we have a motion on the floor in a second. All vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will oppose. Hearing on, voting passes. Thank you, Chip.
Where the red is where we need council signatures, including you, Tim, and then the blue one is your extra signature, Tim.
You don't need our board on here, do you?
No. Can't, you want that.
Chip, do you want to move on to C?
Yeah, required annual form for our grand list. It's been attested by our assessor that there are no appeals pending from any action of the lister or assessor, and there are no suits pending to recover taxes paid, um, associated with the April 1st, 2023 grand list. And the city council signs this form once a year as well. Underwear says select board. You got to be a select board tonight.
Down green.
If you so approve it. I'm getting ahead of myself.
So, I move that we consider approval of the certificate for no appeal or suit pending.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Motion by Chad, seconded by Marie. Any questions or comments for Chip? Hearing on, all vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, do we have to sign both right places?
Yeah, there are two places for a city council member to sign.
You sign, it cuts the background. They give it the merit.
About the music?
Could do. You just have, you'll sign anything you want to back.
The music is nice.
It's good background.
Yeah.
Usually I've got it from the zone report.
It just said, what's going on?
I'd like to put on a slow, slow jam in my presentation.
So, let's move on to 5D. We're going to get an update from Chip on the city plan and the survey that went out. Okay. You have a lecture.
Planning Commission is looking at updating our city plan, and this year, uh, if it's on schedule, it would be adopted in 2025, probably won't be earlier. I don't think we're proposing any huge changes to the plan, but we do want to make sure we capture the current state of the city, any new initiatives we might have, things like, um, you know, that might speak to some of the things that might come out of the legislature about, uh, new designated area programs, um, any new types of land area that we're supposed to be keeping an eye on. And so, you know, the city plan, really, it's about making sure that we have, we have zoning, but we comment on a lot of things in it, and in many cases, just statements of support, not statements of nothing by now, still. It's always good to do some public input when you're in the city planning process. And the Planning Commission did a portion of that by releasing a survey in September through November of last year. The forms went out in the utility bills, and it was available online. Also put, made available in places like Martha's Kitchen and the Food Shelf, Samaritan House. And we got 282 responses back. We had a U V M intern that helped us out with compiling the answers. They were all open-ended answers, so this intern had to go through and identify, she, she identified the themes that people mentioned, and then we started counting the themes. And, you know, the survey is limited in terms of its small sample size, and it's also limited only to the questions we ask, but it's a good first step in the public input for the plan. And over the course of this year, the Planning Commission hopes to do some other methods, so maybe some focus groups or other types of gatherings where we can reflect on the responses that we got to this survey, but also ask other questions as part of the input. But the mayor was interested in seeing what some of the responses were that we got to this survey, and it was, it was, it was interesting. We don't often do surveys like this in the city. But if you go through the packet, you'll see we had a spot where we, um, allowed the respondents to choose all the, all the different ways in which they're associated with the city. They live in the city, or maybe they just own property, or maybe they work or live in the town or one of the communities around the survey. Obviously, most of the respondents say that they live in the city, many say that they own property. We did get a good representation of folks who say they live or work in the town of St. Albans. For some questions, it's going to be really important to note that the respondent lives in the city, but then for others, it's also good to know how the outside community sees us for things that might have to do with our marketing, our economic development, the downtown revitalization. But for each question, we were able to put together a table based on how people's relationship to the city and how they answer the different questions and the themes that arose. So, when it comes to what excites people most about the future of St. Albans, you know, our top answers are downtown revitalization, growth, community engagement, and the recreation opportunities. So, it kind of seems like we're on the right track there. When you look at something new people want to see, they want to see more businesses, they want to see entertainment and arts, more housing, pedestrian and cycle infrastructure. When people talk about what they're worried most, the top three are substance use, crime and policing, and affordability. In many ways, it's sort of ratifying the things that we know have been topics of conversation in the community recently. What do people love about their neighborhoods? They love the neighbors and the community, they like the location and the walkability, they like the feelings of safety and peace, followed up by aesthetic appeal. What would they change about where they live? They'd like improvements to traffic safety, enhanced walkability, noise ordinance enforcement.
Can we make sure Tim Hawkins sees us?
Right.
Every time we try to improve safety, pedestrian safety.
They want to change the noise ordinance, uh, so we don't endorse it? Is that what they're saying?
I don't think that's what they're saying. That's my hunch. That's my professional hunch right there. People feel mostly safe in the city. Many people feel very safe. There are not many people who answered that they do not feel safe in the city. When we asked them why they answered the way they did, keeping in mind, um, you know, drugs came up as a reason, so drugs is probably a reason why someone meant, would have answered somewhat safe or not safe. Then some people just answered, you know, it does feel safe. And that's why they answered that they feel mostly safe or completely safe. And then crime increase and break-ins were also mentioned. And when we asked folks what would help them feel safer, police presence is right up there at the top, so the things we're doing with the regional police force and being able to put our, um, crime investigation unit back on the street, that's, we're already responding to that concern, addressing drugs, and providing more social services, or supporting more social services, those sorts of things come up. Yeah, there's a lot in here, but we're only going to take, we're only really going to take these responses as far as the limitations of the survey itself. Like I said, there's a lot more public input we'd like to try to do before we bring the city plan back to the city council at the beginning of 2025. Planning Commission's going to work on the city plan, um, for the, for the rest of this year. They have to hold a couple hearings, and then when it's referred to you, you'll have to hold a couple hearings. You'll also get a chance to make any changes you want to make before it's adopted. It's important we get it adopted before August of 2025, but I think we have some time. That's the update.
Excellent.
That's interesting.
Any questions, Chip? Hearing on, I think, uh, better for you, Chip. Will either was?
Yes, unless, unless you want me to stay here for the board appointments, too.
Thank you for coming in. Thanks for sharing that. I'll move on to, uh, item number six, a mayor's report. Turn that over to Mr. School.
So, we did, uh, we have candidates for the Belonging Equity and Future Committee, and we interviewed Vicki. I think in here it's Victoria, we'll send up Vicki. She referred to go by and recommended her for a seat on the B E I. So, Marissa and Maura would be go to stay at their full seats, and then Victoria, and we interviewed her, too.
Anay.
Anay, that's it. I wrote it down how to say it. Anay also has full seats. So, Vicki and Anay has full seats with terms expiring. Maura's would expire December 31st, 2025, and all the new seats, December 31st, 2026. Emress, Marissa. And who did you interview with, um, the council? It was myself, Trudy.
I was there for some of them, and then Tim filled in for me.
He needed downtown board.
Okay, yeah.
Was...
So, I'm in the B E I, Marissa, yeah.
Marie was with us.
Always interesting, yeah.
Thank you for making time to do those interviews. So, Chad, you've made a motion?
Yep.
So, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Marie. Any questions for Chad? Hearing on, all vote in favor of the appointments as stated, say aye.
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 You want to oppose? Hearing on, appointments passed, all stated.
And then...
You're going to do the downtown board?
Yep, the downtown, I'm hoping to get by all these, so I get the name. If I don't get it, I know Nicole. So, uh, let me see, did I miss it? Or after, or...
Do you want my copy?
Yeah, if I can get your copy. I know who it is, it's only get the last names correct.
It's in that.
So, for this one, we interviewed Lauren Bowe, she's on Bishop Street, and then Jen and Comm. So, we also interviewed Vicki for this one as well. So, there, we had more people interviewed for than were seats for. So, our recommendation was to move, to reappoint Maureen Brown, Sharon Holcomb, and Donna Howard for their full seats that they currently are in, move Nicole Cunningham up from a full seat, or up from an alternate to a full seat, and Lauren Bowe will be the other full seat. And then for alternates, Jennifer and Comm, uh, for the, those two full seats, uh, for alternate seats, excuse me. And then Maureen's would expire in 2026, December 2026. Same with Donna. Sharon would be 2026. The, the seat that Nicole and Lauren are in will expire in 2024 into 2024, and Nicole would be 2026. And please encourage Vicki to apply again when there's, when we have an opening.
Yeah.
She's, she's got lots of energy.
Oh, let her know. And she already knew. They had all been informed that there were more candidates than seats.
And she was, she was totally okay with her wanting B E I. It'll be a good experience for her, her first seat, her first four appointments.
Okay, so we have a motion, old Chad, is for a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Trudy.
And that was myself and Marie.
And Chad, do you want those term expirations in 2024 to stick?
Yeah, let's stick those, and then they won't have to come back for another interview, so if they're still interested, that way we keep everyone staggered evenly.
Yeah, we would have had a lot of 26s, that's fine, good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, second, for the downtown board to appoint three individuals. These are, any questions for Chad? Hearing on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All boards, I think, for now. I think, well, thank you. Just a quick column on that. We had, to Chad's point, we had a number of interested parties to apply for positions on all boards, not just one or two, but all of them. So we should feel fortunate for the community involvement that we've seen over the last few years. So jumping into my report, Marty was at a major water break on Fedor last night or two minutes ago.
Every water breaks a major. It was on the main. It was on the main, so.
How long did the team work on that?
Oh, in and out, probably four hours.
Thank them for their efforts, if you would.
I heard it was until 1:30 AM that they were out. It was late, right?
No, it wasn't that late. They were getting ready for the storm, too.
Oh, okay.
A lot of rain sleeping.
Late couple days.
So thank, thank them for their work and the same with the, the story that we had. Thank you. Went to the movies last night. Seventeen boys in a boat.
Good.
Very good movie.
I want to see that.
The theater, the cleanliness, some of the changes, staffing, Kayla and who it was, and Garrett were very customer service focused. Did an excellent job. So I think they're kind of, Kelly and her team have done a great job. Turning that public works has been active. Jim Cameron has helped out. So kudos to everyone to make it, make it is what it is now, which is, and I sit, excuse me. I understand they're very busy over the, all day. And so, so thank everyone for that, down. Appreciate it. I think that was about it for me. Thank you for, Chip, a lot of compliments on the fireworks. I didn't have too many people asking about where the laser show was.
Well, it might not be coming back. It'll be something else.
But a lot of compliments on the fireworks, so thank you for that. Downtown activities, tractor parade. Everything was well-received and really showcased the city well. So, what was your opinion on this thing, Trudy?
I already talked about the, the bus issue. And I was gonna mention just the, the community support for the folks that lost their homes on the Bank, Bank Street fire. I thought it was really nice outpouring of support that we did for those folks that lost a lot. So we have a lot to be proud of here.
Bob?
Chip, I do think we all, we have a lot to be proud of. And I endorse what you said about the tractor parade. That was amazing, and the fireworks were amazing. And that's about all that we have going on in one time, so thanks.
Noel?
Uh, Marty?
Yes, sir.
I see we got something around that maple tree there down my way. Is that?
They're gonna tap it.
Oh, you're gonna tap it? Okay.
See if you can get some sap out of it. Can't get sap out of it, we're gonna declare dead. No, they're gonna take it out.
Yeah, okay. And I want to compliment the public works. Did a nice job.
Great.
Ward 3's been quiet from everything I can see. Been interesting to watch the progress on the new apartment building on Lake Street. Seems to be going pretty well. Other than that, again, the fireworks were great. And I think, you know, the city, the city's looking good. So that's all I have to offer.
Maureen was already out there campaigning in front of that building.
Yeah, right.
You get a lot of signatures with the windows all closed.
Probably good. Get them all right in that building.
Chad?
Uh, the only thing, I have Nicole staying here this entire time, so I have a question for you. Dog licenses, when are we gonna be ready to go? Are you ready?
Yeah, you can come in now. We'll send out the postcards probably, I think, this month, beginning of February.
And you can do that online now, right?
Well, you can pay online. But your slip and your title have to mail.
Okay.
How many do you estimate on that goal?
Uh, last year, we had about 350, a little less than that, I think. On the final total.
Is that then up? Is it up?
I think it's down. It's hard knowing. The previous year, it was a little rough. But you can track with those. I think the previous year, they were a little worse than under that one point.
I think a good reminder on the mayor's quarterly.
Yeah, I have you in my notes. That was one of the things to add to it. And I think I'm gonna have, for a town meeting day, we're gonna have a little table out here if I have enough people working to sit and you can register your dog and your goat.
We understand you're planning for the presidential election. Something that we had spoken about previously, and it may be too overwhelming, but we talked about having a youth booth for youth voting to get them in a habit and understanding what it's about. So I don't know if, could you get one of the schools to take that on possibly?
Potentially, yeah.
Not sure.
Last year, we had city school come up in groups, and they stood at the front of the auditorium. Their teachers, they just observed everything that was going on. People checking, you know, going to go using the sanitizer. They walked up, and it was like a 20-minute or so situation that they were there for.
Nicole, I'm gonna take that as a no because when my wife says potentially, that's what that means, is don't sound like that.
We have enough space in there that we could. It's just making sure I have enough staff or schools are gonna provide the staff.
I just, we, we talked about it in the past before you came on the board, so I just wanted to mention that.
So we have primaries, too, this year, right?
Yes.
So we have a lot of elections, yeah.
March, August, and November.
That could be a great project for a high school for those, like, you know, Jeff Walton's group, his students come on that.
And I am open to getting them more involved. It's just making sure everybody's communicating and getting in the right area and not too obstructive. But mostly everybody who comes on, you know, in person, they're all pretty pleasant. I think in the three elections I did last year, I didn't have anybody screaming at me. So it was great.
And you expect to have enough volunteers, I say volunteers, with staffing?
I should. Now, a couple people are out of town this March, but for August and November, I should be good to go. I'll be sending out emails to them. Hopefully by the end of next week, if not this week.
I, I don't remember yielding my time to the gentleman.
You guys are also welcome to come, come out town any day as long as your name's not on the ballot.
What's that?
I said any of you are welcome to come on today or any of the elections as long as your name's not on the ballot.
Appreciate that.
No problem.
Chip? Chip hasn't informed me. I, I cut in front of.
I told him I did not yield my time to the gentleman, or the gentlelady from SNP. I'm good, thank you.
So you were good.
Yeah, but I hadn't officially yielded my time.
Entertainer approval of warrants?
I'll make a motion to approve warrants. Bob, 31/23.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
This is.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, second. All in favor of approval of the boards, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item nine, consideration of approval of minutes.
So moved, 12/11, thank you.
Motion for Chad, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trudy. Motion is second. Any changes, amendments, corrections to the minutes? Hearing on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Chad?
Do you have any little business?
I don't.
Motion due during?
Second.
Could you state the time on that, Chad?
That will be 8:19.
Yeah, could you?